Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and to the city council this evening. Would you please all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Just as a reminder, we all have cell phones. If you will turn them off, or at least unvibrate so they don't disrupt the proceedings, that would be greatly appreciated. What's that? The first item on tonight's agenda is our usual proposed consent agenda, and will be given an overview by our city manager. Boy, there isn't much.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is a very brief consent agenda this evening. The first item that we have is approval of city council minutes from February 11th. And we have claims, and that consists of our consent agenda.
Okay. Is there any of the items the council wishes to remove for further discussion? Hearing none, are there any persons in the audience that wish to have these proposed consent agenda items removed for discussion? Hearing none and seeing none?
If none, I would move approval of the proposed consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. A motion and a second. I sent you ready to vote. All those in favor? Aye. And those opposed, the motion carries. This leads us to open form. Are there any persons in the audience that wish to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none and hearing none, we'll move on. We have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Some moved.
And second it. All those in favor? Aye. And those opposed, the motion carries. This leads us to item number three, a public hearing, new business regarding the consideration of massage therapy business license application. Ms. Kogan, I take it this-
We should open the public hearing.
I'll open it. Sure.
Second.
Make a motion to open the public hearing considering denial of a massage therapy business license application.
Waive the reading.
And waive the reading.
Waive the reading.
Yes.
Thank you. Second.
Now we have a second. All those in favor? Aye. And those opposed, motion carries. Now, Ms. Kogan, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay. This is a public hearing on a massage therapy business license for Tunia Massage LLC doing business as More Massage, and two massage therapist licenses, one for Julia Wang and one for Wahfeng Zhang. In May of 2018, Fridley City Code, Chapter 125, was entitled Saunas and Massage Parlors. It exempted the massage therapy businesses from having a business license, but it did require that massage therapists register with the city at no fee. A May 10th, 2018, police investigation found alleged criminal activity in two business locations in the city which were then closed, and the registrations of the massage therapists in those locations were suspended. As a result, on August 22nd, city council adopted ordinance number 1356, which repealed the saunas and massage parlors, and created new language creating the massage therapy business and massage therapist licensing and requirements. Letters were mailed to all massage therapists of the new regulations with an October 1st deadline to file the applications for the massage therapy business and massage therapist licenses. All but one business met the deadline requirements and were licensed. The city received applications for a massage therapy business and massage therapist licenses for Tunia Massage, Julia Wang, and Wahfeng Zhang on October 23rd. After initial review, additional information was requested and provided, and staff forwarded the application to the police department for the background investigation on October 30th. A thorough background of the business license in Julia Wang found the following information: There was falsification of information on the license application in violation of City Code Section 125.05.1A7, specifically the failure to disclose Julia Wang's ownership and/or operation of five massage therapy businesses in the cities of Blaine, Minneapolis, Columbia Heights, Rochester, and Spring Lake Park; failure to disclose the revocation of a massage therapy business license in Rochester, and the denial of a massage therapy business license in Minneapolis; fraud, deception, and/or misstatement on the license application in violation of City Code Section 125.10.6, specifically its failure to disclose the ownership and operation of the five massage therapy businesses in the five cities; and the revocation of the massage therapy business license in Rochester, and denial of the massage therapy business license in Minneapolis. Multiple massage therapy businesses owned or operated by Julia Wang have been investigated for suspicious activity which include evidence of residential habitation within commercial properties, employing unlicensed therapists in the business prior to application of license or approval of license; one massage therapist was cited for prostitution while working in a business owned or operated by Julia Wang; and the employment of a massage therapist who had been cited for prostitution in another jurisdiction. In addition, it was found Julia Wang has acknowledged illicit sexual activity has occurred in her massage therapy businesses. The massage therapy businesses have presented an ongoing issue for many local jurisdictions. Police departments in at least two jurisdictions have indicated the living and working conditions in massage therapy businesses owned or operated or related to Julia Wang have raised questions and concerns of human trafficking and/or illicit commercial sex. Based on this information, granting massage therapy business license would be a menace to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the public in violation of City Code Section The investigative findings for the individual therapist licenses, if Tunia Massage LLC is no longer the real party in interest of the enterprise in violation of City Code 125.10.14, on the basis that Tunia Massage LLC sold its interest to Dynasty LLC and/or Shaw LLC located in Rochester, Minnesota on August 25th, 2017, therefore it would not have the ability to have a license under this name. City Code Section 125.05.02J1 requires a massage therapist license to be affiliated with, employed by, or own a licensed massage therapy business within the city. If a business license is denied or is withdrawn, the therapist would not qualify for a license. On February 15th of this year, letters providing information of the public hearing and denial of the massage therapy business and massage therapist licenses were mailed to Julia Wang and Wahfeng Wang and their legal representatives. On February 21st, an email was sent to the city by Julia Wang and Wahfeng Zhang's legal representative requesting their applications be withdrawn from the agenda. Due to the nature of this license and the nature of the nondisclosure and fraud, staff felt the public hearing should be held to allow the city council to determine the outcome of what happens here today. So our recommendation is that you hold the public hearing and decide whether you will one, allow the withdrawal of the license application, or two, adopt a resolution denying the massage therapy business license to Tunia Massage LLC doing business as More Massage and massage therapy licenses to Julia Wang and Wahfeng Zhang. And today, at the end of the day, we did receive a letter from their legal representative for each of you. They emailed it to your city email address regarding the request that the licenses be withdrawn.
Thank you, Ms. Kogan.
Steve, you might want to move it into the record.
We're in receipt of an email from earlier today. Does someone want to move that into the record? Move that we accept.
No, second.
I think Steve did, and Tom second, or whoever. Steve's word.
All right. So Councilmember Eggerd has moved it into the record, the letter that we received earlier today, and it was seconded by Councilmember Barnett. All those in favor? Aye. And those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Does council have any questions before I open it up?
Mr. Mayor, just a question from our attorney. So, as our staff has presented two different options for us tonight, is there... I guess my question is, if we allow them to remove their request for a license versus denying it, does that change anything in the future if they were to come back before us for a license?
Mr. Mayor, council members, it does not. I think after this proceeding, and we're going to change our license ordinance so that you can't just immediately reapply, but our current ordinance, it doesn't make any difference whether you accept the withdrawal or actually process what's in front of you.
So you're saying right now, either one of these, if we did deny it, they could come back, or if we make a motion to allow them to withdraw their license, they could come back with our present ordinance that we have now? Is that...
Currently, the way our ordinance is written, there is nothing that would stop them from making an application tomorrow for a new license. Actually, I'd probably recommend that you accept their withdrawal, because otherwise, if you go ahead and pass the resolution, there could be litigation about that decision.
Thank you.
Any other question from council? Okay. Given that, we do have a public hearing, so I don't know if we should invite those present to speak, or disclose the public hearing with the acknowledgement that the council is going to entertain probably a withdrawal of the applicant?
I mean, I think you can open the public hearing. Legal counsel for the applicants is here tonight.
Okay.
But if, I think Mr. Mayor is asking the question, if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of either for or against, have a right, because it is a public hearing. Is that correct?
I think if you open the public hearing, then anyone for or against can-
Yeah, we have opened-
It's open, so-
All right. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you. So this is a public hearing. If persons in the audience wish to address the council? And for the record, Catherine, if you'd just state your full name.
Absolutely. Catherine Gray. Greetings, Mayor Lund, Mr. Weiss-Hofer, and the honorable council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of our clinic and other tenants at the Moore Lake Plaza Strip Mall. My name is Dr. Catherine Gray, and I'm a licensed chiropractic physician. I've been in private practice for 27 years, and I'm the owner of Morning Star Chiropractic and Wellness Center, located at 1210 Moore Lake Drive, exactly next door to More Massage, a massage parlor owned by Ms. Julia Wang. Before I declare all of the reasons why this business should never receive licensing, I must state how it is that this coming April, it has been three years of constant vigilance to not only disallow this parlor to open, but how it ever even came to open in the first place. In March of 2016, I received a phone call from Ms. Becky Cedarstrom, who was at that time the property manager at Moore Lake Plaza. She indicated that my second lease was about to expire March 31st, and would I be renewing one another term. She let me know that she had finally rented our old space, which is the current space in question. We were expanding, we kept the back part of 1214 as our exam, x-ray, and processing rooms, and then expanded over into 1210. Ms. Cedarstrom also stated that in an email, she was putting in a message center, to which I immediately replied, "For clarification, you do mean message center, correct, and not massage center?" She responded via email, to which I have saved to this day that it was not a typo of the word "massage," but it truly was a message center. So believing this was a call center, I agreed to the terms and re-signed my lease, as I had zero plans to relocate at that point. They did their own build-out, almost unheard of in any type of retail plaza, painted a mural in their reception room entitled "The Love Forest." And lastly, at the end of April, we saw them moving in mattresses for their message center in preparation for their May 1st opening. If you've ever had a therapeutic massage, it is done on a massage table. It's not done on a mattress placed on a floor. I immediately contacted Ms. Cedarstrom to tell her that she indeed did sign a massage business, which was in violation of our contract, actually. She put them next door to us, and now there are enormous red flags already in place that this is not a legitimate massage operation. Ms. Cedarstrom gave the excuse that it was her business associate, Ms. Barb Ankrum, who signed this business while Ms. Cedarstrom was on medical leave. Thinking that there is no way this is a legitimate operation, I went directly to the police, and that became the first day that I began working with law enforcement officials. Captain George was as concerned as I was, and he thanked me for bringing this information to light. Unfortunately, at that time, they applied for a business license, thereby opening under the false pretenses that they were anything but therapeutic massage. Captain George gave me indicators of things to look for, and we began reporting the following behavior. I would like to read these bullet points. I've also summarized them for all of you. We noticed employees being dropped off from backseats of SUVs or minivans, but never in the front, no one rode in the front, and rarely saw anyone being picked up at the end of the evening. Vans and SUVs loaded with food were dropped off weekly, the kind of food purchases that you would be buying from Sam's Club or another food warehouse at the quantities of either retail amounts or a business with many employees. Steady foot traffic on opening day, but only males coming into the place for massage. I stopped over to speak with the owner, and I was thrown out. This is the term that we use, because they immediately say, if you're a female, "Get out, no English," or "No appointment today for you." We have proof of three females working at the center who tried to get massages as walk-ins, only to be told the same exact statements: "Get out, no English, no appointment for you today." Their open sign is frequently flashing at 11:00 PM at night. I don't know about you, but I get my therapeutic massage during the daytime. We observed two different middle-aged men leaving with a very young Asian woman, holding hands. They would return within the hour with gift bags from fantasy gifts across the street. We observed a menu that they have of their services also online, in which women are depicted as geishas, along with a menu of services such as forehanded massage, a very strong indicator that sexual acts are being performed, and shower massage. Photographic evidence of women drying their clothes on the picnic bench outside of our office, and photographic evidence of women walking in bathrobes with shower caddies to and from the Lifetime Fitness, also directly behind our building. It was then that we discovered they were advertising on Backpage, which you probably know was shut down by the Department of Justice last April. It's a site like Craigslist, right, but mostly known for its adult ads from sex workers and massage parlors, to which More Massage was advertising daily. I arranged for a meeting immediately with Ms. Cedarstrom that August of 2016, when we noticed the ads, to discuss them and our suspicions, as I was absolutely positive now that this was not a legitimate business. You can only imagine the duress that this has caused our team for almost three years now, our patients, who constantly ask about the place next door, and our concern for safety at the center. We met with Ms. Cedarstrom, presented our evidence, and she told us that she met with Ms. Wang, who informed her that she had heard of such practices at Asian massage parlors, but she had installed video surveillance that she could pull up at any time of her employees, including showing Ms. Cedarstrom on her cellphone, to make sure that they were not offering illegal prostitution-type activities. HIPAA, the Patient Privacy Act laws, as you are probably aware with, would never allow the videotaping of a legitimate therapeutic massage service in process. Ms. Cedarstrom then went on to ask us if we offered any such services in the menus, such as forehanded massage, or shower-handed massage, or shower massage, rather. And I literally could not believe we were having this discussion. After telling Ms. Cedarstrom that we had been working with the Fridley Police Department since April, she promised to get in touch with Ms. Wang, whom she said was the most convincing salesperson she has ever met, and indicate that if she didn't take the ads down on Backpage, she would be in violation of her lease, and it would be terminated in writing within 30 days. I then asked if the landlords were aware. She assured me that they were. This was also the last conversation that we had, as Ms. Cedarstrom then retired, turning all duties over to the woman who signed the business, Ms. Ankrum. We've presented every piece of evidence to not only Detective Jones, who had been assigned to the case, but also to my property managers and landlords. The landlords indicated I was not to contact them again, and said this is why we have a property manager in place. I've also worked with Ms. Kogan, and I have to commend your city departments of police, fire, city hall, as I know that they have been diligently gathering information and worked to rewrite the Fridley laws, so that massage therapists must show proof of a minimum of 600 hours of schooling and submit to a background check in the city. This business was shut down October 1st of last year and has not reopened. Given the information that has surfaced during this thorough investigation by the police and city employees, the nature of the business practices that have been occurring next door, the serious concerns that I have for our team and patient safety and clients affected by this at Moore Lake Plaza, I have 100% confidence in knowing that the city council will vote to deny licensure, deny reapplication of any type of business by Ms. Wang, and work to ensure that all illegal activities that have been done next door under the guise of massage are prosecuted to the full extent of the law. I'd like to close with the fact that I have worked hard for 27 years to make sure that therapeutic massage is understood not only for its incredible health benefits, stress-relieving benefits, and emotional stress relief. I will correct anyone who calls it a massage bed in our office, letting them know, nope, it's a massage table. And anyone who dare calls any of our licensed therapists masseuses, the seedy term associated with unlawful activities and not actual therapeutic massage, are corrected, and it's explained to them that we employ three licensed therapeutic certified massage therapists that are insured with either the AMTA or AMBP, correct, have more than passed the qualifications for licensing. Our therapists were licensed even before this went into effect, because we always want everyone to know that everybody working on them in the office is fully licensed and Attached to your handout that I passed out, which I did not discuss, is their current ad, and my apologies, as we don't have a very strong printer of it here, but I wanted to show you that this was taken off of the newest site to replace Backpage. Are you familiar with Rub Maps? So rubmaps.com, you agree that you are 18, and you click on the site to go in, and then you can pull this up. What I did is I circled what's not visible, but you can go there on Rub Maps and search "massage" in Fridley. And what it says is, you'll find it under the heading "Massage Parlors, Services Fridley, Happy-Ending Erotic Massage Fridley." I'm going to assume that you all know what happy endings are for the masseuses that are out there, okay? I would like to not actually discuss what that is, and you can look that up later if you'd like. But this is an ad. It says that it's closed, but they do have a sign-up referring people to another business. I don't know if it's owned by them or not, but it's located at 5019 University Avenue in Columbia Heights. So it says, "During the closure, we're directing business and will reopen November 1st." It is not reopened, and I'm here to represent our team, our patients, the center, and to make sure that it stays that way. So respectfully submitting this statement, and thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Ms. Gray, thank you for your very articulate and concise comments and your interest in this matter.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the time. I really appreciate it.
Good evening, dear-
Yeah, it'll pick it up, so you can just stand upright, and it'll catch it. Thank you.
All right. I'll stand up. Good evening, dear Mayor Lund, this is Volcom and the rest of the city council members. My name is Dong Zhou. I'm representing Ms. Wang in this application for the license. I am here tonight for one thing and one thing only. I'm here to protest and also to ask the city not to discuss this, open it up for an application which has been withdrawn. There's nothing for the city to take a decision on. It's already been withdrawn. I would ask the city to follow the recommendations of the city attorneys, to allow this to withdraw. I'm not here to discuss the applications, and I'm not here to contest all this false, out of taking it out of context, and obviously, I'm interested discussions of the businesses here. This is not the forum to fight that battle. I'm here for one thing and one thing only, to ask this council to not discuss this, a application which has been withdrawn and no longer exists. And with that, I conclude my statement and rest my case. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. And I'll respond to that. Once, I feel that once the application was presented and we had to advertise for this public hearing, then we have to continue with the public hearing. The late date that receiving this thing of rescinding that application, and I see this letter is dated today, it's impossible for us to make notice, public notice, to remove it. And so, as Ms. Gray came here, because she fully expected there was a public hearing, so we're holding the public hearing. We certainly will take your letter and the request into consideration, and we'll see how the council weighs in on that, so... But I see that you're not happy. I can tell by your tone of the voice, but I think that it's appropriate that once we publicize a public hearing, we have to come through with that public hearing.
I just want to make a note that our withdrawal has been, a letter has been submitted on the 21st, not today. And the letter we submitted today was in reaction to the city's decision to proceed with the decision. So just that-
Well, even on the 21st, there's no way we can get it into the publication. Our legal publication is, comes out once a week, and we have to rescind that now at this late stage was probably impossible. But just take the letter and all that into consideration.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I take it, does council have anything more? Otherwise, we're going to close the public hearing, I assume? Because there's only two people in the audience.
A move to close the public hearing for the massage licensing.
Second?
A motion, we have a second. All those in favor to close the public hearing? Aye. And those opposed, the motion carries. So it sounds like city attorney, that we have two choices. I think we got it up on the board, that says to accept or allowing the motion for withdrawal of the license, or considering either approving or denying the license.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the licensing of massage therapy businesses and therapists has been something that has been difficult for all cities, some of the other cities that we represent. We've always hoped that the state would take over licensing of this. But in each of our cities, you know, the League of Minnesota Cities has not put out a model ordinance, and we've been drafting them, and there is nothing in your ordinance that talks about what do you do once you get a withdrawal, a request for withdrawal and you've noticed a public hearing. The other kind of hole that we have here is, you know, if you went down, are we going to accept the withdrawal, or are we going to formally pass a resolution denying it? It doesn't have any type of teeth to it, because we don't have anything in the current ordinance saying you can't come back and reapply tomorrow. So, I mean, my recommendation is that if you go ahead and pass the resolution, I mean, theoretically, there could be litigation that your decision was arbitrary and capricious. So as your legal counsel, that's why I'm recommending that you accept the withdrawal, because then there's no chance of litigation over this application, but you could get another one tomorrow. But I think we have a little more work to do on the ordinance, but all the ordinances that the different cities have are far from perfect, and we're trying to make them better. We still have some holes in our current ordinance, and I'm still frustrated that the state doesn't take over licensing, but that's my frustration.
We'll make that known to our representatives at the state and see where that goes. With that, do we have a- Um, with that, um, do we have a, did we not, uh, set a moratorium on accepting or approving massage licenses until we had time to rework our ordinances?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. That's well.
Your Honor, I just want to, uh, point out for the council's benefit that, uh, these types of licenses are unique, similar to liquor licenses and tobacco licenses, where the council has expressly stated that they want you, as a body, want those licenses to come to you for approval. There are a myriad of other licenses that the city issues, of which we would call them administrative protocol, that, uh, would be typical for the staff to receive a letter from a licensed applicant saying, for whatever reason, they want to withdraw. And that doesn't come to the city council. Um, but this one, after months of, of work being done and, and certain levels of cooperation with the applicants that were, uh, were present or not present, uh, the staff finished that report and was presented, being prepared to present it to you, uh, for consideration. And, um, it's at that time that when that report was done, we felt that it was the obligation of our staff to turn it over to the city council. Um, and as our city attorney pointed out, there was no specifics in there to say, what do you do with a, an application that is being requested to be rescinded after, particularly after an entire report had been presented? And, uh, so it was therefore, I thought it was, you know, the proper due process, a transparent process to bring it to the city council, um, and to, and take into consideration seriously what, what the city attorney is recommending here. But I just didn't feel like our staff, myself, had the authority, uh, to accept a, a, a letter like that after all the report and investigation had been concluded.
And thank you for reminding me of that. Uh, we've had this discussion, uh, not that far back, uh, about licensing what was pretty much, um, you know, um, typically administratively done, and then those licenses such as this and others that we expressed that we wanted to, uh, continue to, uh, approve or deny those types of licenses, so.
And then finally, Your Honor, I think that there was some history with similar types of licenses, a liquor license where, uh, the staff brought it to the city council for, uh, just, uh, uh, kind of the last consideration, and the petitioner had asked to have that rescinded, and that was granted. But again, the staff had no authority to, particularly after the, the report had been done. Uh, it may have been different if it would have been on the first day of, of, that they issued their license request, uh, but this is after months of, of work being done and the process, uh, was being fulfilled, uh, to inform the city council to make a decision.
Mr. Mayor, one more question. So Ms. Gogan, um, the, when was the public hearing actually, um, when was that actually posted?
We did not actually publish or post the notice.
Okay.
The letter was mailed to the applicants on, um, the fifth?
May I just say? The reason I'm asking is that the public hearing notice went out, and then after that's when we received the withdrawal.
That's correct.
So at that point, we were already planning on having a public hearing. So I'm just doing the timeline, whether it was the twenty-first or today or whatever, it was after the, um, information was sent out about the public hearing. Is that correct? You're shaking your head, yes. Okay.
Uh, we sent the letter to them on, on, uh, February fifteenth that there would be a public hearing tonight.
Okay.
And then we received their request last Thursday, the twenty-first, asking us to withdraw the application, and we felt that we needed to bring it to you so that you could make that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I just wanted to add that I initially did, uh, receive an email from legal counsel saying they wanted to withdraw, and then I went and read the ordinance, and it didn't have any process in the ordinance about what to do. And I said, well, first of all, um, there's no way that we could accept any type of withdrawal just from, legal counsel would have to be signed by the, the applicants, and then, like a day later, that came in. But, um, it was kind of after the, we were all set for the public hearing.
Okay.
Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to.
Should we close the public? Do we close?
We closed the public hearing.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
Sorry.
I'm ready to move.
Okay.
Like to make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the license applications from Julia Wang and Yifan Zhang, as, as presented in the, the letter here tonight.
And you'd also wanna, um, include the business license in there, too. There's, there's kind of three license applications, um.
Withdrawal of the license applications from both Julia Wang, uh, Yifan Zhang, and the business license for the, uh, massage parlor.
Name the massage parlor.
Tuna is how that's pronounced.
What is the name of the massage parlor?
Tuna.
Tuna?
Tuna.
D U I N A. Tuna.
Tuna Massage, otherwise known as Mor Lake Massage and Massage Ther.
Tuna Massage, doing business as Mor Massage.
And I seconded that.
Okay, we get all that, uh, from the recording secretary? I assume we did, so. Um, there is a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion to, uh, accept the withdrawal of the license application? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed, the motion carries. Okay, which leads us to item number four under new business, uh, resolution approving the city investment fund policy for the city of Fridley. I assume that's gonna be from our finance director?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, uh, this evening, I'll just be providing a brief presentation outlining the, uh, history of the city's closed bond fund, and then touching on, uh, the proposed community investment fund policy, and then I'll be discussing the overall model, and then I'll conclude my presentation with a discussion of next steps. At present, the city of Fridley maintains, uh, what's known as a closed bond fund, and typically what closed bond funds do is they aggregate any surpluses or deficits of individual debt service funds. So upon conclusion of, uh, project and the debt service, any remaining monies are collapsed into the closed bond fund. Beginning in the early nineteen nineties, the city began transferring monies out of its closed bond fund in an effort to balance the operating budget. This was in, uh, direct response to the levy limitations that were previously included in the city charter. And in nineteen ninety, it's important to note that the closed bond fund actually held a cash balance of just over eight million dollars. Uh, but by the end of two thousand and eighteen, uh, the city will have spent down about four point eight million dollars of those monies, uh, leaving the fund with approximately one point, uh, two, excuse me, three point two million dollars. And then as part of the adopted two thousand and nineteen budget, uh, the council effectively ended the practice of using the closed bond fund, uh, as a one-time funding source for operating purposes. Uh, since the closed bond fund was no longer used to support the city's operating budget, the city council, as part of the budget discussion, uh, guided staff to consider some alternative uses for the fund. As outlined in the slide here, uh, under that general direction, um, staff used, uh, three go- uh, goals or, um, objectives to guide our internal discussions about how to use the fund. Uh, the avoidance of ad hoc expenditures or transfers, much like we had been doing, uh, since nineteen ninety. Uh, long-term sustainability for the fund, meaning that the fund will, uh, exist into the future to support city activities and projects. And then lastly, that the fund should be used, um, to support a broad range of city activities and/or projects. So generally, we considered three different uses for the fund. Uh, use as a rainy day or emergency reserve fund, use as a capital equipment funding source for, uh, purchasing of, uh, one-time items, uh, or use as an inter-fund loan mechanism. After, uh, internal discussion and review with the city manager, the city staff ultimately settled on using an internal loan fund mechanism, and that's what the, uh, staff is recommending this evening, the creation of a community investment fund, uh, as an inter-fund, uh, financing device. Generally, the fund and the policy, which is included in your packet, uh, would allow the city to issue inter-fund loans to the water and sanitary sewer funds, and then those funds would in turn, uh, replace average, uh, size bond issues, um, which are ordinarily used for, uh, more expensive capital projects. So if you'll recall, as a part of our two thousand and nineteen budget discussion, we included in that bu- in the budget, three point eight million dollars of water fund bonding. And then, uh, the public utility funds would in turn repay those inter-fund loans with all the typical interest they would ordinarily pay, allowing the new community investment fund to then issue new loans to support future projects. And, uh, this is known as revolving, so the fund would revolve. As it took in new money, it would make loans and payments for new projects. As outlined in the policy included in your packet, the fund would only be permitted to su- uh, support capital and debt expenditures related to public utilities in the form of inter-fund loans, and then also, uh, transfers from the fund to the Parks Capital Improvement Fund to support, uh, park and recreation projects. Over time, uh, typically ten to fifteen years, depending on the size of the loan, uh, the public utility would repay those inter-fund loans with interest, and any other typical costs such as origination fees, underwriter discounts, things like that. That interest income, and I want to stress this, would normally be paid to, uh, third-party bondholders, so when the city issues debt, we repay it with interest, and the bondholders get profit from that debt via our interest payments. Instead, we would propose with this fund to, and policy, to capture and, uh, dedicate those, that interest income as transfers to your parks and recreation projects. So interest that would normally be paid to bondholders would in turn be used by the city to support the build-out of park and recreation improvements in the city. And then I do want to stress that the fund can also be, uh, permitted per the policy to support any reasonable administrative costs associated with managing the fund. Uh, additionally, the fund would need some, uh, additional financing to support the proposed activities, and, uh, the, uh, resolution before you this evening also would transfer nine hundred thousand dollars from the general fund into the new community investment fund. It would also, uh, establish the practice of the city of transferring annually any unassigned general fund balance in excess of the upper fund balance threshold established by your policy. So you'll recall that every year around budget time, we have a discussion about, uh, the working capital that the city has, and our policy is we need to have fifty percent of the next year's budget, and right now, uh, based on our current two thousand and nineteen budget, we're sitting at about fifty-seven percent, and I'll touch on that in just another slide. What would happen every year when we did, when we would do that calculation, we would transfer any of those excess monies into this fund to support these activities. Beyond the use of the closed bond fund and those general fund monies, the policy also outlines other revenue sources such as interest, uh, and investment earnings, including any of the inter-fund loan repayments. Fees obtained through the issue of private activity bonds, which are also known as conduit bonds. You may recall that the city recently issued conduit bonds to support the Village Green project. Uh, as a result of that issuance, the city received about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for our administrative surcharge, and so those monies would be dedicated to this fund. And then any, uh, any unanticipated payments or windfalls, uh, that the city would receive. So if we were never anticipating receiving the money, the policy would essentially say that those monies would go into this fund to support the activities described in the policy. And then, of course, as consistent with any of your other funds, you could always appropriate money directly into the fund as part of the budget process or some type of interim action. So the council has seen this, uh, slide before as a part of the two thousand and nineteen budget process, so you can see in the green, uh, the working capital at, uh, thirty-five percent, and the orange, the working capital at fifty percent, and that yellow line represents the city's fund balance. As you can see in two thousand and eighteen, at present, uh, our fund balance exceeds our working capital requirements. So if we were to draw down, uh, fund balance to a fifty percent level, that would result in about an expenditure of one point two five million dollars. If we were to draw it all the way down to the thirty-five percent level, that lower threshold limit, uh, the city would have to expend, uh, just under three point nine million dollars. Uh, suffice it to say that the general fund, uh, in terms of, uh, a balanced perspective has, uh, quite a strong reserve that can be used to capitalize the capital investment fund, excuse me, community investment fund. So, just, uh, outlining the policy, uh, can be a, a little confusing, so I thought it might be valuable to, uh, provide something visually. As you can see, kind of working from left to right, under step one, you see the closed bond fund, the general fund, and all those miscellaneous proceeds that I referenced in earlier side, slides. All of those monies would be transferred to the new community investment fund, and then you can see from step two, in that arrow on the top, the monies from that fund would be issued through inter-fund loans to the utility funds to support capital projects. And then step three, over time, those utility funds, much like they would otherwise if we issued bonds, repay those, uh, inter-fund loans back to the community investment fund with interest. And then as you see in that, uh, L-shaped arrow, the interest income that was earned on those inter-fund loans would then be transferred on an annual basis to the Parks Capital Improvement Fund to support capital projects. And as discussed on the side there, uh, in the bullet points, um, ultimately staff supported and is recommending, uh, this approach, given the goals that we established earlier. It provides long-term financing for capital projects, it provides a new revenue source for the Parks Capital Improvement Fund, and as the council talked about at your recent goal-setting retreat, we are on the, uh, eve of a new, uh, Parks Master Plan. And then it also, uh, prevents the use of gap financing or ad hoc expenditures, so we're not using the fund just to support, uh, one-time activities. And just some other policy sections that are, uh, uh, included in the policy in your packet. The fund may be used to support debt service that's related to public utilities, uh, but the policy does include a prohibition that any of those expenditures have to be limited to fifty percent of the ensuing year's available revenues. Uh, so essentially, uh, whatever the fund was making, uh, we could only issue debt, uh, for half of that amount. That's designed to protect the solvency of the fund. And then additionally, additionally, we, uh, in the interest of solvency as well, the policy requires a minimum fund balance, which actually increases over time as the fund begins to revolve, uh, having larger payments accruing more interest. So for the first few years, uh, the minimum fund balance would be about three hundred thousand dollars, moving up to five hundred thousand, and then by two thousand and twenty-six, there would be a minimum fund balance of a million dollars. The one thing also that's important to mention, if the council were to approve the policy this evening, uh, it would be effective for December thirty-first, uh, two thousand and eighteen. After discussions with the city's auditors, their recommendation was, uh, since the city's audit is currently open, to make all of these actions effective for the end of that year. So essentially, when the books were closed in eighteen, all of this would be in place, and then we would move forward in two thousand and nineteen with the new activities. So the recommended action this evening, uh, staff, uh, recommended the council adopt the resolution adopting the community investment fund policy and authorize a transfer of up to nine hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the community investment fund. As a reference, those are found on page one oh three to one oh six in your agenda packet. And the one thing I'd also like to stress that if the action were approved tonight, staff also plan to recommend using the fund to support the cost of the Lock Park Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project, which, uh, the council toured earlier this evening. Uh, that will be presented at a future meeting, uh, for your consideration. The last item that I would stress is at any point in time, if the council were to use the community investment fund to issue an inter-fund loan, uh, per the charter, you would be required to, uh, adopt a resolution authorizing, uh, that inter-fund loan. So at any point in time, uh, the council would always be asked to use this financing mechanism. It's not something that staff could accomplish administratively. Uh, and then lastly, of course, any discussion of the use of the financing source would be included in any, um, uh, budget workshops, uh, budget development processes for future years. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have, uh, about the policy.
Thank you for the presentation. Personally, I think it's, uh, a good one, and I appreciate that you brought this to our attention. Do we have comments from the council? Jeez, they're easy tonight.
If it's so in order to move a resolution approving the community investment fund policy for the city of Fridley and approving a transfer from the general fund to the community investment fund, uh, on pages one oh three through one, uh, one oh something?
That should do it.
One oh, um.
One oh six. One oh six.
One oh six.
And I will second that motion.
So it was pages one oh three to one oh six?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The motion, we have a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed? Motion carries. Which leads us to informal status report. Do the council or staff have anything to report to the, uh, listening audience?
You're gonna talk about corridor study?
Yeah, sure, that'd be a good time to bring that up. Uh, we certainly, uh, welcome all, uh, Fridley residents and businesses to attend our upcoming, uh, corridor study workshops. We had a very successful one just a couple of nights ago on Thursday evening here at the council chambers, and that was the first of four. Uh, every two weeks, uh.
March second.
March second or?
Seventh, I'm sorry.
Seventh. March seventh is a Thursday, six to eight o'clock, and then two weeks after that, then two weeks again after that. So you don't have to necessarily come to them all, so don't assume that just because you didn't make it to the first one, you're certainly, uh, entirely welcome to, and I would encourage everyone to attend, uh, one or more of the sessions, uh, so that we can decide on what we can do about Highway sixty-five. so that we can decide on what we can do about Highway sixty-five and Highway forty-seven as they traverse through our community. So please consider attending.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment too that we had this whole area full of, of residents, um, talking about this corridor.
And we can always make more, more room for more people if they want to come. So we have more chairs. But, uh, the council chambers was, uh, quite full, uh, but we can always squeeze in many more.
The, uh, topic on the seventh is, uh, street design options. So we get to actually look at intersections and play with it. Looking for ideas.
Just another FYI, if, if you have a fire hydrant in your neighborhood, if you can, if you know where it is and it's not, if it's not, if it is covered with snow, they said what? It takes like seven or eight minutes for them to locate one and, and shovel it out. So if you have the opportunity to, um, shovel one out that's in your neighborhood, you can, um, help, help save lives and, uh, so. And I think, uh, tonight was the, as they closed the spring spree for Springbrook, I think you could get a ticket probably till maybe midnight, I don't know, on their webpage, so.
Yeah, I'm sure if somebody called there tomorrow, they can get a ticket. Uh, the deal is to get the head count for the food.
Right.
But the spree is, uh, this Saturday, March second, at Springbrook Nature Center. And it's fifty dollars per person. Um, there are still a few tickets available is what I've heard, last heard, so not many, maybe a dozen. So if you want to get in there, call tomorrow. Just talk to somebody at Springbrook Nature Center and they can get you a ticket.
This is their foundation fundraising?
It is, uh, yes, for the.
Foundation?
Yep, it's for the Springbrook Nature Center Foundation who puts this on. And, uh, all volunteers in that foundation and all, uh, profits and proceeds go to enhanced programming and scholarships for students and, uh, to attend different, numerous functions at, uh, Springbrook. Anything else?
Uh, if nothing further, I would move that we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you for listening to our city council meeting this evening. Good night.